All right, it's six o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. Please join me for the flag salute.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Siana.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Lozey.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Protem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. Thank you, Siana. We have one new employee introduction. Merritt, you gonna take that one?
So it's my pleasure to introduce our new FBIT administrator. Her name is Morgan Dodson. Morgan, if you want to come up to the podium. We're very pleased to have Morgan here. Morgan moved to Fortuna in 1995 and attended school in both Fortuna and Ferndale. Upon graduating, she worked as a Navy corpsman, working as a surgical technician. After the Navy, she attended college and received a bachelor's degree in business administration and a master's degree in marketing and finance. You may recognize Morgan from a previous volunteer effort she was involved with, the Twenty Two Trees Program, which brings attention to veteran suicide prevention. And Morgan addressed the council, I think it was about two years ago. If you remember that, maybe two or three years ago, a little further back there. Morgan also volunteers as a finance officer for the Fortuna American Legion Post 205. In the interview, Morgan really surprised me with her familiarity with city projects, city businesses, and especially the special events. And I was convinced when, in that interview, that very soon she would be eclipsing me in, you know, what she knew and who she knew, and she'd be introducing me to people instead of the other way around. Morgan's began making her rounds. And as you know, FBIT, we haven't seen a lot of the participation that we've wanted. Downtown has been very active, but we haven't had a lot of activity from our core areas. So last week, Morgan spent time, you know, knocking on doors, getting to know folks. And I think she's already getting our, our core areas represented on the, the, on the Business Improvement District Board Advisory Committee, excuse me. And so I'm, I'm very anxious to see her get going. Morgan is a self-proclaimed Excel nerd, and she's already putting those skills to use. I think she has about a 20-tab spreadsheet, tracking everything from the, from the city events calendar to the different budget for different events, putting together a budget. She's already working on the bylaws, and she's already started her presentation for the fourth board meeting, which we don't have advisory committee members yet, so she's already got ahead of the game. So I couldn't be more pleased. So I'd like to, it's, it's my pleasure to be able to introduce Morgan as our new city FBIT administrator. And so please say hello to her if you see her around town, and you won't miss her in the future.
Thank you. I really do want to just say thank you, though, to Merritt and to Siana and to Buffy. They've been amazing, getting me all set up. It's a new change, and everybody has just been wonderful in getting me adapted to the city. And everybody's just really been welcoming, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Morgan, like on her first day that she was here, already came out and helped with the Float for Thou Gray Lighted Parade. So thank you, Morgan, for that. It was fun being able to spend some time with you. All right, moving on to oral comments from the public. If anyone has any comments they would like to make to the council that are not on our agenda tonight, please come up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Arlene Spiers, and just wanted to announce that the Riverlife Foundation is having a community Christmas dinner on Christmas Day, December 25th, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM at the Fortuna Veterans Hall. And curbside pickup and delivery are available in Fortuna. And they are needing volunteers. You can call 707-296-0415.
Thank you, Arlene. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to our consent calendar. We have 12 items tonight, including city council minutes and our monthly department reports from administration, community development, finance, parks and rec, police, River Lodge, and the report of disbursements from the finance department, an authorization for the city managers to continue teleconference public meetings for the city council and all city committees, commissions, and boards, supplemental budget requests for $11,880 to provide supplemental support for the mill district specific plan, and a supplemental budget request for the purchase of new, two new police vehicles. Would anyone like to pull anything?
I'd like to pull E.
Anyone else? All right, Mike.
On E, I just wanted to commend the parks for the hard work you guys all put in and everything, and bring to the public's attention the vandalism that's happening out there. It seems like at least every month, there's new tire tracks and ruts. Sometimes trees run over in the medians. And it was in their monthly report this month about vandalism on the medians. And if you see something, say something, if you can get a license plate or make of a vehicle, because that's not free to repair that. It takes time away from other stuff. And we appreciate the public helping keep an eye on it. Thank you. That's it.
All right.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to our city council business. We have one item for organic waste disposal ordinance revision. Staff report, please, Merritt.
Thank you, Mayor Long. This will just be a brief staff report. But essentially, the recommendation is that the council hold a public hearing and conduct a first reading of an ordinance 2022-757 revising Chapter 8.14 to the Fortuna Municipal Code governing organic waste disposal and reducule, reduction regulations that implement enforced CalRecycle Organics Regulations and SB 1383 compliance, and change the date of compliance from January 1st, 2023 to July 1st, 2023. And essentially, you know, the, the text of the municipal code is not being changed by this ordinance. Only the date is being changed. And the reason that we're doing this is because right now, there's supply chain shortages. The new regulations would require everybody to have universal collections, so solid waste, recycling, organic waste, the three bin system. Right now, Recology can't get trucks. Also HWMA, which we're working on with regionally, they have to put a project together to create a tipping floor to be able to receive that organic waste. So supply chain shortages, the ability to handle and dispose of that waste. We can't implement this and ask the community, that mandate that the community do this recycling when we can't perform it under a franchise agreement. So we're pushing this out six months in the hope that we can, we can have those facilities in place and the equipment in place in order to be able to comply with those regulations. It is possible we may have to bring this back to the council in the future and defer it. So this is really just pushing the date out six months. And we're going to make every effort we can to, to, to put the items in place, including updates to our franchise agreement before July. But right now, that's our best guess of when, at the soonest that we could implement that. So really, it's just pushing it out six months.
And Merritt, is there a slight change to the title?
Oh, yeah. So thank you. The title that was listed in there before, there is a change in the ordinance. And essentially, what was in there last was from the, the last writing of the ordinance, when it was also to, the finding of the council was also to finding that the ordinance was exempt from SEQA. So that can just be struck, and it's really just the first part of the title striking that. So it would be an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna amending Chapter 8.14, the organics reduction recycling of Title II of the Fortuna Municipal Code, and, and then strike out the, and determining the ordinance to be exempt from SEQA.
Okay, so when the motion is made, do they need to say what the change to the title?
Including the strikeout of the last part of this sentence, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? We've reviewed this a few times, so this is just changing one date. Any one from the public have any comments or questions? Seeing none, we will close public comment.
I'll move to conduct first reading of ordinance 20, 2022-757 with the corrections as mentioned, by title only, and continue the public hearing to January 3rd, 2023.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Siana.
Ordinance 2022-757, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna, California, amending Title VIII Health and Safety of the Fortuna Municipal Code by revising Chapter 8.14 Organic Reduction and Recycling Ordinance. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lozey.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Thank you, Siana.
Our next item is city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Long. I just have a few items that I wanted to update the council on. One of them, probably the big news, is that the Town of Scotia recently closed escrow on the remaining portion of the mill site that they owned. And a gentleman named by the, by the name of Vince Rizzo has purchased that. And, you know, Mr. Rizzo's been very enthusiastic about developing the site and expressed a willingness to work with the city on the planning and land use and the entitlements that he'll need to get to be able to do that. So I think the sale of this property will certainly expedite the development of that and help see the mill site integrated in the city of Fortuna. So we're looking forward to working with Mr. Rizzo and his partners on the development of that site. They don't have a name yet, but they'll be coming up with a doing business ads at something like the Fortuna Mill, Mill Site Commerce Center or something. They're working on names still, but, so they don't have really a name for that, that entity yet. But we're really looking forward to working with them and seeing how we can integrate that property with the rest of the city. On December 15th, I attended the annual CERA board meeting. CERA is the city's risk pool and is a JPA of a number of different jurisdictions. And they provide the city with workers' comp, general liability, property, property liability, employment liability. This risk pool has been a little bit over a year, and they're still working on cleaning up the business from the two former entities. One, which was REMIF, which the city was a member of. And then another one was ParsAC, which had a whole different group of cities that were a part of that. So attending the meeting, they did, the board did vote to include three more small fire departments that had been recently canceled. Their, their insurance provider declined them coverage and stopped covering in California. And they seem like a very low risk and evaluated the risk of the three new members. So there will be three new members to the JPA. That was interesting. And also that the city, you know, the, the amount of claims that we've had is generally staying, the amount and number of claims are generally staying the same. The city's doing a pretty good job of keeping our, our claims low, so we're doing a good job there, too. Just, I was also very pleased to be able to judge the floats in the Al Gray Lighted Parade. It was really fun to see all the entries, and there's some really creative ones. And it's hard to, to pick one or two. So I was glad there was like, you know, there's a handful of different awards in different categories. And, you know, they can brag a little bit about the city's float. The city won the, I think it was a community, community choice or community award. And anyway, they decorated the city's people mover, and it was, it was, it was great to see. And of course, you know, that effort was led by our city clerks, Siana Emmons and our mayor, Sue Long. And they put a lot of time in and did a great job with the help of some others. And I just have to hand it to Renee Lindsay. Again, the city's under, working on a MOU with the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce took on a number of the Fortuna Business Improvement District related events. The Al Gray Lighted Parade was one of those. I think they did a great job. I think they ended up with 33 entries. I mean, it was, but it was a windy night, and everybody showed up, and there was not that much left on the road, even despite the heavy winds. So I think they did a great job, and Renee and Stephanie deserve a big hand for really pulling that off and, and making that happen this year. And then just one last item. I did meet with some representatives from the Great Redwood Trail Agency, which is former than, formerly the North Coast Railroad Authority. They're, they're working on a master plan for the Great Redwood Trail Agency, and they were interested in the area around Fortuna, in particular, really what we're doing with those interchanges and what the plans are for the 12th and Kennamore interchanges. They did express some concerns, and it's good to be opening a dialogue with them early. They really want the best access for the trail and, you know, the best access for interchanges. And roads are not always the best thing for a trail. And so I think it's good that we're, we're getting a dialogue going with them sooner than later and thinking about how we can do the best for, for each of those different facilities. So that's all I have for my report.
All right, thanks. Any questions for Merritt?
Just a quick question. Could we get an update on the police department?
Oh, the police facility. Yeah, we opened bids, so we had a number of amendments, or, excuse me. There was clarifications and bid questions, and so we had a number of bid questions on the plan. So we ended up extending that a couple of times. So we opened bids this Wednesday, the 21st, at 4?
2:00 PM.
2:00 PM. And so we're, we're really excited. We, we think we've answered most of the questions that are out there. And we're, we're hopeful that we'll have good participation based on the questions that we're seeing. We're, we're hoping to get a few bids on that, so more to come. And we'll, we'll give you an update of what those bid results are at the next council meeting.
And those will just be open here at City Hall?
Yeah, City Hall. So and anybody from the public's welcome to attend if you're interested. 2:00 right here in council chambers.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is future agenda items. Anything to add that's not already on our radar? All right. Next item is city council reports. Mike Johnson.
Okay, well, we, I had a H-COVID meeting recently, and went to a presentation on some different items. One of them is the...
Mike, sorry.
Yeah. All right, now I'm turning my mic on. Presentation on some of the jobs happening around. And believe it or not, the Last Chance Grade is still on schedule and still slated to come in at or under budget for the portion that's already taking place. The Safety Corridor Project has had a bid protest filed, but not over the price and the work, but over the deep, disadvantaged business enterprise, and making sure that that's all up and squared away. So that's going to be a little bit slow down, but it looks like it's still going to be on schedule for construction with, with the wet weather in the winter and everything. We had a presentation on the road charge for electric vehicles and, well, I should say EVs and hydrogen-powered vehicles. And they're working on that. They're trying to safeguard the road, road gas tax dollars so a comparable amount gets put into the right trust count and the sales tax under, to safeguard the sales tax, because that's not something that people immediately think of. They think of the gas tax. But there's also a sales tax portion of that that goes back to each agency, and we need to safeguard that. You can learn more about that and possibly, if you want, participate in a test coming up, and that would be at www.caroadcharge.com. And that will give you an opportunity to sign up and for the test, or if want, you can just learn more about it. So, thank you. That's all I have now.
Thank you, Mike. Mike Lozey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a meeting with the Redwood Coast Energy Authority on the 15th of the...
Mike, look phone.
Mike, Mike. And we received a report from Matthew, Matthew, who's the executive director with regard to the offshore wind project. And he reported that RCEA will be moving toward, forward to engage both of the bid winners, one being RWE, which is a German-based offshore wind company, which is very active and very well-funded, and then a company called California North Floating, which is a subsidiary of Copenhagen Infrastructure Partners. And they have not only projects in offshore wind, but many types of, uh, different energy product, projects. He reported that he's talked to Senator Mike McGuire with regard to ensuring that the actual electrons coming in from the offshore wind project will come in to actually come into Humboldt Bay, which is really important for various reasons. Also, if you have solar panels on your house, you probably were interested with the CPUC decision last Thursday. They made changes in the solar power, the direction they were going to go was to charge solar panel owners a certain fee that would go back to PG&E. They received so much pushback on that that they changed their mind. But what is now in place is any new solar will receive a lot less of a percentage, like 75% less. So it's just kind of the wrong direction, at least in, to entice people to, to try to get solar on their houses. And last, maybe some of you have heard, I think maybe Sue knows about this. A gentleman by the name of Ray Gardner, I believe is his name, who is a CEO of a cooperative called Kawai Island Utility, is putting together a group of local folks. Have you heard of this? I'm sure she has. To investigate the forming of a cooperative or JPA here in Humboldt County. So we'll keep our eyes open for that and see how that goes. And I think that hopefully will be my last report on RCEA. Chris Mobley will be taking over that, our, as our representative, so.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, thank you, Mike. Jeremy?
Jeremy, Mike. Parks and Rec had a meeting last Monday. I apologize for missing that meeting. But the items that they reviewed for the minutes for the last several months, it had been a little while since we'd met. But they also reviewed what we saw last week and, or two weeks ago in our presentation for the new basketball court project. For those that weren't in attendance or didn't see us online, where there's a single basketball court over by the bathrooms in Roanoke Park, there's going to be two new courts going in, full size with fencing around it, new nicer backboards, poles that extend out and into the court, so less likelihood for kids to collide with the big metal pole, and, and some decorative flower pots and things, a barrier basically between kids and the drivers by. So it'll be a much nicer facility, and we're excited to present that to the public through the recommendations from the Major E Committee. And then they also reviewed the Newburgh Park expansion. You'll notice that there's a sign out there for Prox 68, where we were able to buy that piece of ground adjacent to Newburgh Park, where there's going to be a future expansion for additional parking. And hopefully, as things progress over the next several years, skate park and hopefully another facility for snack bar, restrooms, and so forth, so that we can expand our park areas. Also, I think they had 37 participants for the Thanksgiving Kid Camp during the Thanksgiving break. So we're always appreciative that they offer that to our school students. And then the many items that they did to, in preparation for Christmas over the last several month and a half. Mike already mentioned the tire ruts. I wanted to bring that up, just that there was five different medians in Fortuna that had problems with vandalization. And then it's sad to say that there's, they're prepping to repair work from an arson on the men's bathroom in Roanoke Park. So that's a bit of frustration. So if you hear or see any of those type of activities, we've got PD that wants to hear from you. And then all the downspouts on the cook shack had to be changed out to PVC because they keep getting damaged because they're metal and getting squashed. So just little things that are kind of generating frustration, I'm sure. And lastly, I want to invite you all down to the Depot Museum. They put lights up on the Depot Museum along with some of our other facilities. But inside, they, they have the roaring 20s Christmas theme. So it's always a joy to go and see that seasonal display. I'm excited to hear from our city manager about the mill site. That's exciting news. I wish we could have seen that in my tenure, but, you know, that's still moving quite fast in, in the whole scheme of things. So I'm excited to see that project move forward. Not as an official business with city council, but a privilege, anyway. My wife and I have made it about 11-year tradition to go down and help wrap presents for the Santa sleigh. And I want to give a shout out to the fire department for what they do for their community each and every year. This year, they, they had 127 families that they supported with Christmas gifts and food and blankets. And that was approximately 358 children are going to have a Christmas because of our Fortuna Fire Department. And then, lastly, I just attended the Fortuna Chamber of Commerce mixer at Redwood Capital Bank, and it was a great turnout, and it was nice to see so many people back out and about because it's been kind of a slow or a small turnout lately. So it was nice to see a large group of people enjoying the holidays together. And lastly, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. This is the last one, so we'll see you in the new year. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy. Tammy?
Well, my report's pretty, pretty small compared to this. I had a Humboldt Transit Authority meeting today. They're working on a new transit system that's going to be similar to Lyft in McKinleville, where you can call and get a ride within McKinleville. That was one of their unmet transit needs, so they're working on that. And then the rest of the meeting, there was two items in closed session, so I have nothing to report on that. And wish everybody Merry Christmas, and we'll see you in the new year.
All right, thank you.
There's still time to sign up for the Hot Shots Basketball Program through Parks and Rec. You need to get your kiddos signed up by December 30th. I'm happy to report I'll be helping with that again, and I'm roping in my friend Janet because she loves it when I do that. I'm super excited that the mill property has been sold, and I've met with the new owner several times. I think they're going to be a huge asset to our city, and they're just really willing to work within the city requirements and all of the things, you know, the zoning, all of the things that the city requires. They're anxious to get going and anxious to do all of those things. The parade was super fun. As always, Siana has a vision, and it comes out like perfection. We have like, you know, cardboard staple guns, zip ties, those things, and somehow it all held together. Merritt was running around with black duct tape right before it started because the wind was whipping everything. And anyway, it held together all the way through. Thanks, Merritt. Since Mike mentioned the PG&E coalition, I have actually been asked to be on the board. It's still kind of a, it's not hush-hush, but some of the things that we're working on, we're just not really ready to share with the public yet. So you will be hearing more about that, and I'll probably have to come up to the podium from the audience and fill you guys in. Went construction is getting super close to moving into our new office, and we are going to host the Chamber Mixer in January. So I hope to see you guys there on January 18th. All right, what you've all been waiting for. It is time to certify our election. So the County of Humboldt Elections and Voter Registration Office has certified the November 8th, 2022 Fortuna Municipal Election. And our new council members were Mike Johnson, who was re-elected, Christina Mobley, who I refer to always as Mrs. Chris, and Kyle Conley. So we just need a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-36. Oh, do we have, oh, we can open public comments. If you want to comment on it. Not only can change it, but if you want to say something, come up. All right, seeing that we'll close public comment, now we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2022-36 and read by title order.
I'll second.
All right, Siana.
Resolution 2022-36, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna declaring the results of a municipal election held November 8th, 2022. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, now is the kind of the end of my part, recognition and comments for outgoing council members, which is awkward because it's me and Jeremy. So years ago, I started this kind of tradition about writing people a story when they were leaving. And with the exception of Doug Strel, they all let me do that up here on TV. Doug made me do it in private at a party. So anyway, I didn't ask this time. I'm just going to do it for Jeremy, so. Because if you ask, you might get told no, so there you go. All right, Jeremy, this is for you. "Twas the 19th of December when your term came to an end. You will be missed as from the dais you descend. When you were elected, we had nothing to dread. We knew you would do exactly what you said. You spoke a few words and then went right to work, serving the citizens and never a jerk. Your eyes, how they twinkle, your smile is merry. Even if you tried, you couldn't look scary. So neat and tidy, especially your hair. Your signature vest offers additional flair. Early morning meetings were always dreaded. In the afternoon, you were much more clear-headed. When visions for Fortuna ran through your head, you shared your ideas and filtered what you said. The packets were prepared by the staff with care, and your binder of papers appeared at your chair. Reading the packets was not always exciting, but necessary in order to decide anything. You have a soft spot for a community's youth, but by no means could it be said you are uncouth. You served on the Parks and Rec Commission. Your help with the float was a great addition. Programs have been added due to Major E. Improvements are ongoing and great to see. The changing of F-Bid caused quite a clatter, but it was kept because it really does matter. Bringing people to town for our special events requires a lot of work, but it just makes sense. Relationships developed will long be treasured. Their rewards and value cannot be measured. Attending Redwood Empire Division meetings gave insight about Sacramento proceedings. Almost all of the rules and mandates being passed conflict with our interests, but we are not asked. Going on the ride-alongs with the police gave you insight as to how crime has increased. During your term, a new police chief was hired, Chief Day came on board, and the department inspired. The city manager evaluations were easier than other negotiations. Having a city manager like Merritt helps keep the staff motivated and close-knit. Hiring employees that are second to none shows what a great job the city has done. Frustration arises when budget constraints limit the benefits and can cause complaints. You were able to see issues from both sides and give what the city could afford to provide. The needle exchange program was stopped in its tracks. The council stood strong, and people had our backs. There were some other tough times during your tenure. The losses of Dean and Bill were tough to endure. You betcha is often your answer is you agree to help out to the best of your ability. You will remain a leader in the Landmark, as on the next chapter of life you embark. Now, as you dash away, I just want to say I truly expect you to run again someday. And now we exclaim as we conclude the night, Merry Christmas to you, and to you, a good life."
Would you like to say anything as you are stepping down?
Yes, thank you very much. Way to get me choked up before I have to do this. Well, tonight, boy, this is going to be harder than I thought. Tonight, I'm filled with gratitude for the opportunity to be service to the community. I appreciate everyone that has made this experience such a deeply rewarding one. Specifically, I would like to thank our, my fellow council for all their teamwork, and the mayor especially for her leadership as I launched into this four-year, my first four years of service. Despite COVID and the lack of FaceTime during parts of this journey, I appreciate the mentorship and guidance I received as we navigated uncharted territory during that time. And that's all I'm going to give to that subject. I would like to thank the city manager, the chief of police, and all the department heads for providing such a great place for all of our staff to work. I'm very proud of the morale and camaraderie that they have developed as a culture here at the city. And thank to the city staff for bringing their best to the job each and every day to make this a great place to live. Service is something that is a core value of mine. I'd like to thank my parents for teaching me that early in my childhood. My mom and dad would always be working at church or volunteering for others in quiet and humble acts of service, whether it was him mowing grass at the church on the weekend, or my mom practicing her piano so she could play on Sunday morning. They always gave their time and talents. I'd like to thank my former Kiwanis family. They taught me the value of service. It's been some time since I was a former member, formal member, because of the other service commitments I had taken on by acknowledging the influence that they had on me as well. Also like to thank my work family at Landmark and their support and understanding that I would, quote-unquote, run off to another meeting. My very first job was at Green's Pharmacy Fortuna. Robert and Mary Johnson have been such an influence on me from the very start. Their hearts for the community have a lasting impact on me for the desire to be a contributor to the greater good. And lastly, my wife and kids. Larissa has been a rock, and she has been the best behind-the-scenes supporter of all my crazy ambitions. Whether it be to buy a business or serve on the council or serve as a Realtor Association member, she's always said yes and mean my desires, her desires. I could go on discussing all the people that have had a positive impact on my life, but if I go on too much longer, I'm sure I would miss somebody and feel bad about that. All of you have been a part of my life, and you know who you are, and I thank you for it. To the new council members, thank you for your willingness to serve and give back to the community. I hope you get as much as you get out of, as I have out of representing this great city. So I will end at the same way I started with gratitude. I'm so grateful for the voters that four years ago gave me this amazing opportunity to give back to the community that has given me so much. Thank you.
What is any of the council members like to say for this, Jeremy?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody on the council, but especially to Jeremy and Mayor Sue, because you guys brought a expertise in subject matter that not, and each of us has something that we can bring to the council, and what you guys brought, nobody else could. From being a business owner to how the community works, talking about showing property to potential doctors coming to work at Open Door, Memorial. I mean, just things that not everybody thinks about, but you brought it to mind and educated me in it. And I appreciate that, and for running a business and what it takes and the potential pitfalls of PG&E and everything else. And you educated me in that, Mayor, and I want to thank you for those things. And each of us brought something. And it's amazing how this council came together and each found our place in it, and we walked forward for the community and all of you that are out there right now. And thank you for all the support that you provide for us and for staff and what they do, so. So thank you very much.
Sure, I'll start with Jeremy. We each, like Mike said, we each bring something different to the table. And during any of the negotiations or discussions we've had with regard to property, purchasing property, anything like that, Jeremy just brings a wealth of knowledge. And he helped us all with some really good questions that none of the rest of us would think of asking. And he just really dove right in and helped us through those, some of those questions. He, he was, he's a rock. He stands and, and doesn't waver from his positions, which we can all just really appreciate. So I thank you, Jeremy, for your service for four years, and hopefully, again, like Sue said, you'll be back. Sue and I started 2011.
10.
2010.
Very end.
Yeah, she's right. She's always correcting me.
Somebody's got to do it.
So I, and when we first, our first term on, it was Doug Strel was the mayor, right?
Yep.
Sue, myself, and Dean Glazier, and Ken Zanzi. And Ken Zanzi was the Mayor Pro Tem at the time, and he sat to my right. And I can't tell you how much I learned from Doug Strel and from Ken Zanzi. I also learned an awful lot, and it's a reason why Sue's been the mayor for the last eight years? Eight years, having learned so much from Sue. We didn't always agree, and we still don't, but I will still like to have lunch with you from time to time. Congratulations to Tammy, the mayor-elect, and... I know. That'll be coming next. Yeah, I spill the beans a lot, so. Congratulations to both Kyle and Chris. You're going to bring your own different ideas and your backgrounds. Don't be afraid to give us those ideas, to put those, that information out there, and don't be afraid to take action. And again, like Jeremy said, thank you for everybody's support for the city. It's your support for the employees of the city that makes Fortuna such a great place to live and work, so. Sue, thank you, and Jeremy, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Well, I'm going to try not to pull a Sue and have some tears, but this is happy and this is sad. I'm sad to be losing two great council members who've also become very good friends. But it's exciting getting two new ones, you know? We have two great council members coming to join us here. It will be a different council and a learning experience for all of us, especially whoever's going to be the next mayor has a lot to learn, too. going to be the next mayor has a lot to learn too. It's going to be hard to follow the one that we've had that's done such a great job, become very good friends. I worked beside Sue for the last six years as Mayor Pro Tem. We've become very good friends and work very well together. And again, we don't always agree on everything, but we can go past that and, and continue working. So I can't say too much, but thank you both of you very much for your service to the city. It's very much appreciated. We do have the best city in the county. So, thank you.
Thanks.
So Tammy told me that she was sorry I wasn't going to get a poem. And I said, what do you mean? I'm going to get a poem. I'm writing my own. Hey, so here goes. To serve as a council member and your mayor has been an honor that I will forever savor. Being the mayor in this town does not seem political. It's more like community service, but it's critical. In 2010, there were eight candidates for three seats. I started knocking on doors covering all the streets. I remember my first fundraising event mingling with those that I would represent. I looked around that room in surprise at all the people that had deep Fortuna ties. These leaders for me were about to vote. I was humbled and had a huge lump in my throat. Somehow, my passion and love for this city shone through. And I became the fifth woman elected to serve all of you. Most have shown me a ton of love and respect, but then there was the social media aspect. When the keyboard cowards started to bash, I would reply with my phone number in a flash, saying, please call me so we can talk about the facts. No one ever called, but it stopped them in their tracks. There are some things I am super proud of. One is the bike park, which was a labor of love. A group of kids from Tati Thomas School wanted to have activities that were cool. The teacher said, I know a council member to call. I was really thrilled to meet them all. Their ideas were great and enthusiasm was strong. I shared with them that the process could be long. I told them, even though it's wrong, adults like to say no. They persevered for three years until the city said it's a go. Organizing the campaigns for Measure E and G was something I was thrilled to oversee. It was tried before at a cost of $30,000 to the city, but it failed dismally, which was a pity. A group came out and strong, a group came out strong in opposition, and people were afraid to challenge their position. I was appalled that no one stood their ground. In 2014, what was in Measure V was voted down. The council made the decision to try again in 2016. The cuts to the budget from the state had to be seen. I offered to organize a committee to get it passed. Everyone worked hard and remained steadfast. With town hall meetings and budget talks, the community stood strong on our soapbox. Walking around town and knocking on each door took a lot of time, but was a necessary chore. By explaining the need to citizens face to face, they began to understand what was at stake. I was elated when it passed in November, that taste of victory I'll always remember. Others are always following the Brown Act, running smooth meetings and staying on track. I always tried to make sure the right thing was done, and I never voted on an issue based on reelection. I've always tried to be fair and kind, but firm. I hope that has shown through in the long term. Not once in my years as mayor, running the show, did I ever have to use the gavel to gain control. Setting ground rules and expectations with the crowd enabled them to know just what would be allowed. Also high on the list is hiring Merritt Perry. He is the best city manager, we can all agree. His accomplishments are second to none, and playing jokes on him is really fun. His office is constantly broken into, and it's crazy just what those culports will do. Floats built with duct tape and cardboard each time earned the city an award. Give Siana a vision and a staple gun, and we will make it happen while having fun. The Halloween parties and potlucks will be missed. Good food, silly games, and camaraderie there exists. Being invited to participate in school activities all over town was a delight, and I love that I still see the students around. Traveling with Tammy was a joy on any given day, but her navigation skills consisted of telling me to go that way. Driving through a storm and flood following detour signs in Sacramento, we ended up at the same dead end three times. Meetings by Zoom was my biggest pet peeve. When in person resumed, I was so relieved. I got better at a lot of things over the years, but I never conquered holding back tears. When certain topics of joy or passion arise, my heart sometimes just leaks out of my eyes. As Fortuna continued to provide things to do, our events have been top-notch and really grew. The fireworks festival was started by Dennis Went. It's the biggest party in town, a well-tended event. Planning and organizing are some of my gifts. You will still see me either in charge or taking shifts. Fortuna is in a good place and moving along well. There are projects and changes coming that will be swell. City staff work hard and are a dedicated bunch. They always come through, even in a crunch. We've added several young people in the last five years. They are becoming leaders and role models to their peers. Working with such a talented group was a pleasure. Friendships were forged that will mean a treasure. I have served with council members that truly cared. We didn't always agree, but our love for the city, we shared. The cohesiveness and affection for one another continues to shine through our council like no other. No bickering or tearing each other down. We work together because we love our town. Life chapters are constantly changing, which means priorities need rearranging. My coworkers and business partner won't even pretend that they are not glad there'll be no city meetings to attend. The reasons I ran are here showing their support, and for all of them, I never wanted to fall short. I had no grandchildren all those years ago. Number 12 in April, will its sweet little face show? Add in a special guy who somehow thinks I'm great, and I decided the council was too much for my plate. It's bittersweet and difficult to say goodbye, but I'm trying hard to remember my why. I almost made it. Although tonight I am stepping down from this seat, my community service is far from complete. Thank you to Chris and Kyle for answering the call. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all.
I have one more thing to say about Sue. She's been trying for 12 years to fill this room. All she had to do was leave the council.
And Sue, before you guys step down, we just want to add something we wanted to give to you from.
For Councilmember Stanfield, and that's a map recognizing his service and thanking him for his contribution to the city. And we got a couple. We tried to make them proportional to the years of service, so we got mayors along.
It's a little bit bigger.
And it's a similar map.
Oh, wow.
Cool, thank you.
So it's a map of the city with, thank you to Mayor Long for 12 years of dedication.
All right, there we go.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you very much. I'm still going to call you, Jeremy.
With our next mayor not officially in place, I'm pleased to assist the council in conducting the next couple of steps in the reorganization. And I'm going to start by inviting Council-elect Kyle Conley and Council-elect Chris Mobley to the podium so I can administer the oath.
You can share the mic. I read that you did. You can please raise your red hand if I need to after me. I state your name.
I, Chris Mobley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Ladies and gentlemen, our newest council members.
Yeah, I think we could. If anybody wanted to say anything to outgoing or incoming?
We have one more step that we're going to take to nominate the newest mayor, but I'm wondering if there are any public comments? Would anybody like to speak at this point? No.
Hi, good evening. Michelle Bushnell, Second District Supervisor. I first of all, would like to say congratulations to Jeremy and Sue on retirement and that, you know, I've got to work with Sue and Jeremy for two years. And I have such a big appreciation for Fortuna. I didn't know it as well before I was elected. Jeremy, I didn't get to work with as much, but Sue, I can tell you, her and I became friends quickly. And I appreciate her integrity, her honesty, and her love for Fortuna. It's superior. And so I really want to recognize that, and I wanted to say congratulations to Chris and Kyle. I look forward to working with you both.
There's no other public comments. I'll move on. We'll close the public comments and move on to 9D, which is the nominations for mayor. I'm going to conduct this portion until the new mayor is in place, and then the new mayor will take over the remaining portion of the meeting. So at this time, if there's a council member who would like to nominate another council member for the role of mayor, now would be the time.
I'd like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem, Tammy Trent, for the office of mayor.
Okay, we've received a nomination for Tammy Trent for mayor, and I'm going to take a roll call vote to see if it is going to be approved. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Trent?
Yes.
So ladies and gentlemen, City of Fortuna's newest mayor, Tammy Trent.
Mayor Long is going to be a very hard one to follow in her footsteps, but I'm going to do my best. Moving on to the next item is the nomination of the Mayor Pro Tem. Do we have a nomination for Mayor? Oh, I'm supposed to do that. I would like to nominate Mike Johnson.
I will second that. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
This is a new role for me.
Okay, and the last item on our agenda is to approve the appointments of the seats and the various boards and committees.
So this was the appointments that we discussed at the special meeting. The attachment was actually included as part of the staff report for the adoption of the resolution for the election results. So I'm hoping that everybody reviewed it and agrees, and really, this just requires a consensus. So a voice vote is fine.
Okay, do we have a voice vote? Everybody in favor?
Yes.
Aye, yes. Okay, that concludes our meeting for tonight, so.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Meeting adjourned.